Call me in order to start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by grace reform. Okay, now here. Roll call please.
Sabers.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Dosher.
Here.
Ricardo.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Chart.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Okay, we have a form. A couple of things we want to do, a little swapping around. I need, I have a recognition I want to take care of first, then we want to go, do the executive session right after that before we go into consent agenda. So Mr. McLeod, will you come up here please? John has been putting in a lot of work, volunteer work out of Lake Mitchell for the last four years. So come all the way up here. So I'm gonna, I've got a proclamation I want to read declaring today John McLeod Day in Mitchell. So. Whereas John McLeod, you ready for this? All right. Did your wife tell you it was coming?
No.
Oh, I should have invited her. I told her, I'm sorry, but I've been busy today trying to get everything. So today proclamation declaring May 16th, 2022 is John McLeod Day in Mitchell, South Dakota. Whereas John McLeod has been a lifelong member of the Mitchell community and has a passion for improving the beauty of Lake Mitchell. Whereas in addition to his business contributions to our community, Mr. McLeod has been volunteering during his free time to help improve Lake Mitchell and the city of Mitchell. Whereas for the past three years, John has spent countless volunteer hours assisting in the city's forestry plan around Lake Mitchell, averaging up to four hours a day, four days a week. Whereas John has also recruited and developed a volunteer group to assist with those efforts to improve the aesthetics around Lake Mitchell. Whereas John McLeod has contributed to the city forestry plan by donating additional trees for planting around Lake Mitchell to improve the beauty of the lakeshore for years to come. Whereas John's efforts demonstrate how community members of the city of Mitchell truly do go outside expectations. Whereas I, Bob Eversum, Mayor, City of Mitchell, would like to formally thank John McLeod for his contributions that have shaped Lake Mitchell and the city of Mitchell in a way that the community can be proud of. Therefore, be it further resolved that May 16th, 2022, be declared John McLeod Day in the city of Mitchell in honor of his volunteer contributions and impact to the beauty of Lake Mitchell and the Mitchell community. Due to the 16th day of May, 2022, Bob Eversum, Mayor. Definitely the volunteers that are helping now. So we've got Brian Temple, Dwight Scott, Randy Rockenberg, Van Weir, some of the laypeople. Let's recognize them too. Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, John. If you haven't been out around the lake, they've done a lot to kind of clean up the shoreline. And I know some people, some of the fishermen weren't real happy with the trees, but the trees are going to come out when we dredge this thing anyway. So we've actually got it all cleaned up. They planted some new trees. It really looks nice. So thank you very much. Okay, with that, I entertain a motion to go to the executive session. First, South Dakota codified law 125 to one personnel and three legal.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sabers. Second by Mr. Barrington.
Yes.
Okay. Further discussion? All is fair in the motion, if I have seen an aye.
Aye.
Close name, motion carried. Mike Chambers. Thank you.
Your name?
Oh, I'm Mike Dammara with the rodeo here in town. We are having not only our parade that we're having this year like we always do, we're having our community kickoff that we usually have up at the rodeo grounds, we are having it downtown here by the plaza this year, kind of learn some new stuff from some other rodeos when we go to NFR, we're going to bring back some window painting and the theme for this year's parade is going to be the good old days, so we're trying to bring back some of those items that we used to have back in the good old days. I've only been on the rodeo for 10 years, but they tell me it was the good old days, so I'm going to take your word for it. So we're going to have just like what we always have at the kickoff, free food, drink, till it's gone, we'll have some music, we have some giveaways, we announce a committee member of the year, a rodeo hall of fame person, and we also name our grand marshal of our parade, so we're just trying to do some different stuff. I think there's a under 12 baseball tournament in town, I believe, that same weekend, so we're just trying to, you know, the Corn Palace Rodeo is, Stampede Rodeo has always been a big part of the community, so we thought bringing it downtown, you know, where the Corn Palace is at, just, you know, making it that much more and kind of actually a tribute to the city, so, because the city and the community helps us out so much, so we just figured it'd be a good idea, and it was available, and with Doug's help and getting things put together, we're, it looks like it's going to be a lot of fun, so. Any questions? That was only, was that two minutes? You said, you only said I had two minutes.
Something like, yeah, you're close.
Anyway, if there are any questions, I can answer them whenever, so.
Any questions? Okay. Good luck. Anything else? entertain a motion.
We have to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Mrs. Turk.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen for the discussion. Anybody who knows which should address consent agenda items? All's fair the most, whoop, roll call please.
Sabers?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
McCardle?
Aye.
Dosher?
Aye.
Barrington?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Charks?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye. Motion carries. Citizens input, if you need to address mayor and members of city council an item that is not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your concern, presentations are limited to three minutes, items will be considered but no actually be taken. Young lady, would you like to address the council?
Yes.
State your name and go for it.
Hi, my name is Ellie Gates, I am 15 years old. I'm speaking about how 5G has affected me. During track last May, I was having stabbing pain in my right foot and numbness in my toes. The pain kept me up through the night and I was taking relief 24/7. I developed headaches, back pain, muscle weakness, and depression. I spent the summer going to doctors and missed out on my rodeo season and cross-country seasons. I have had my foot injected, two x-rays, two MRIs, and nerve conduction tests done on me. They would ask my pain level, most of the time it was between an eight and nine. Last September, I was sent home by the doctors and they told me there was nothing that they could do for me. The pain and lack of sleep was affecting my grades in school. One weekend, I ended up in the emergency room and they put me on steroids. Thankfully, our friend that does equine massage called to see how I was doing and suggested me to meet with Beth. I had been living with pain for almost six months. She has educated me on 5G and how it affects my body. My muscles are tight, they won't release, and they won't allow me to do what I was able to do before. I qualified for state cross-country as a seventh grader, and this year I wasn't even able to compete. Reducing exposure to 5G has helped, but I can't get away from all of it. There are 5G towers near my home and my school. I continue to have myofascial release done every three to four weeks so I can participate in sports. 5G has affected my health, my grades, and my grades in school, and my ability to compete in sports. This is how 5G has affected my life. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Nelson, and I'm here concerning 5G. Did you know that 95 out of every 100 American adults owns a cellphone, and worldwide, three out of four adults now have cellphone access? The wireless industry is one of the fastest growing on earth, racking in annual sales of $440 billion in 2016, excuse me. In this article in Democracy Now! magazine notes that cellphones were first marketed in US consumers in 1980s without any government safety testing. Then a decade later, one of the industrials owners handpicked, excuse me, then a decade later, one of the industrious own handpicked researchers, George Carlo, reportedly told top company officials, including leaders of Apple, AT&amp;T, and Motorola, that some industrial commission studies raised serious questions about cellphone safety. On October 7, 1999, Carlos sent letters to industrial CEOs urging them to give consumers, quote, "the information they need to make an informed judgment about how much of this unknown risk they wish to assume," unquote. Instead, Cellular Technical Communications and Internet Association reportedly tried to discredit Carlos's finding and had him physically removed from its premises during its annual conference in February of 2000. Our piece in the investigation expose showing you how the cellular industrial industry has worked for 25 years behind the scenes to convince you that cellphones are safe, when in fact, if you look at the independently funded science, the picture is a lot more mixed than that. And there's that smoking gun memo from George Carlos in 1999 telling the CEOs of all these big companies, quote, "Look, this stuff is raising serious questions, especially about kids and cancers and genetic damage," unquote. And I think that the real parallel for both big oil-
That's your time, so you need to wrap it up.
Okay, I have one paragraph.
Be quick.
I think that it's really parallel with both big oil and big tobacco. In each case, these big companies were told privately by their own scientists that there are serious questions about their products, whether it's cigarettes, fossil fuel, or cellphones, and in each case, those executives' decisions not to share with the public, but rather to keep that information to themselves while others, while telling the public and telling the press and telling policymakers, there is no problem.
Okay, thank you. Now, if you're going to speak to 5G, you know, if you're going to, please don't come up and say the same, not you, I'm sorry, you're done. If anybody's going to come up and speak to 5G, please provide additional information and don't just keep saying the same thing over and over, or we will stop you and ask you to sit down.
Well, clients, officer, I'd like to share with you just about a couple findings from scientists that have talked about 5G. The way in which wireless industries have tried to influence the science research of the effects of cellphone use is called war gaming. War gaming meant a number of different things. It means finding science that is friendly to industry. It means discrediting science or attempting to discredit scientists that are critical of industry. And it means trying to put industry-friendly scientists on key advisory boards, such as the World Health Organization. In 2011, the industry made sure to get a number of scientists on the advisory board of consultants with the WHO on the decision all about whether cellphones cause cancer, and that is contrary to the conflict of interest rules that the WHO has, but the industry managed to circumvent those. It put money into that process, and at the end of the day, in 2011, the WHO called cellphone radiation a possibility, but a number of scientists who were on that committee, who were invited, said that they wanted to call it probable, and one scientist even wanted to call it known. Additionally, the natural toxology program of the US government found clear evidence that cellphones can cause cancer. Hardl, the Swedish scientist on the WHO committee who wanted to call cellphone radiation a known cancer risk based on his studies, that are a nasty brain tumor that are very difficult to treat. It is not like a specific sort of node, and you can take out because it goes throughout the brain in long strands. Hardl was especially concerned about the means of the children, notably the United States is sorely behind other advanced countries on this. In Britain and France and Israel, the government have issued very strict limitations on cellphone use by children. In the public school in France, there is no iPads, there is no wireless because of the concerns about the health of the children. And in case of, and in the case of Hardwell in Sweden, once he started to publish the findings of 2002, the industry immediately mobilized to have two of their industry-friendly scientists immediately put out a paper condemning him. At the same time that those two scientists were opposing independent scientists and saying that Dr. Hardl's findings were incoherent, they were consulting to Motorola as expert witnesses in brain tumor cancer, so who are we to believe? There are people out there that say both ways.
Time's up.
My name is Roxy Ackman. I don't know anything about 5G, so I, most of you probably know me as the past owner of Zesto, my daughter does now own Zesto. Couple weeks ago on Thursday, I get to work and we have a food truck parked two feet from our picnic area. Calling everybody thinking, well, this can't be happening, you know, why is this allowed? I found out there really isn't any rules against it. The cops couldn't do anything, I called Dan and Bob and they, you know, they finally got some action on it, he's not there anymore. As far as I know and what I have heard, I am actually in a lawsuit with the lady that owns, not owns, rents my building where my beauty shop used to be, and she hired this guy to come down there into a city parking lot to sell. I mean, I don't know what the situation is with food trucks, if they are normally, I thought they paid the person to be part- thought they paid the person to be parked in their parking lot. But I think we just need to start getting some ordinances set up and some rules set up so this doesn't happen again.
We do not, they can park in a public street or public place without any, the state health department does inspect them. They did have a, they had had an inspection. I think the thing-
We, yeah, we called-
The issue was the noise, right?
Well, the noise was the issue, but the fact that they're two feet from my business was a little annoying. I mean, this guy was not even from South Dakota. He was out of Nebraska. He does pay taxes here, but yet he can park that truck out there on a lot that we pay taxes on? I don't think, I don't think it's right. I don't think they should be able to sell out of a city-owned property. I think they should have to be on private property and pay that person for the use of being parked there. So I just hope that maybe we can get something started, maybe a first reading or some type of ordinance. I know Sioux Falls has got one. You can check it out, see if that would work here in Mitchell. I don't know. But I just don't want to have to deal with that. I mean, we've been in business in Mitchell for seventy-two years, and I'm not having somebody like that come in and, you know, granted, I think he had one customer in two days, but still, it's very, very maddening. So I just hope that you guys can get started on something that will prevent this.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All righty, thanks, guys.
Hi, my name is Sarah Shaw, and I want to give you an update on a cell tower battle in Pittsfield, Massachusetts. In February 2021, after two years of presentations at city council meetings like this, the Pittsfield City Council asked their local health department to investigate health effects caused by radiation transmitted from a Verizon cell tower. The city council also asked the department, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to intervene, but they declined. So the Pittsfield Board of Health began investigations in April 2021, in a meeting where the local residents spoke about their health effects, and experts argued there that the cell tower was not permitted properly and caused severe health issues throughout the town. The board was presented with over eleven thousand pages of evidence, studies, scientific reports, and more about the dangers to humans and the environment caused by pulsed and modulated RF radiation transmitted from the Verizon facility tower. On February 2, 22, the Pittsfield Board of Health unanimously voted to send Verizon a cease and desist order to resolve the issue of RF emissions from the Verizon tower in a residential neighborhood. The board stated that it is our duty to do everything we can to protect the health of our residents. So on April 11, 22, the formal emergency cease and desist order was sent to Verizon. The order stated that the Verizon facility is a public nuisance, cause of sickness, and a trade which may result in a nuisance or be dangerous to the public health and further. The Verizon wireless facility directly harms individuals and renders dwellings unfit for human habitation or constitutes condition which may endanger, impair, the health or safety and well-being of occupants as defined in state sanitary code. So this was the first time in the United States that a board of health has been able to make the determination that cell towers do cause health effects and should be turned off and relocated to other areas. And so they should be commended, the Pittsfield Board of Health and also the Pittsfield City Council should be commended for their due diligence. And we're asking you to follow and maybe look into this example, and hopefully, this will be a part of our community as well. So, and I truly believe that this education and outreach will continue across the country. We'll hear more about it, and because people care about the health of the people and also the planet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paula Bradner. This is a landmark 5G study by New Hampshire Legislative Commission recommends reducing wireless exposure. The state of New Hampshire established a legislative commission to study the environmental and health effects of 5G wireless technology in 2019. They recently completed their final report, which includes fifteen recommendations to raise awareness, educate, promote oversight, and reduce radio frequency radiation. The commission met between September 2019 and October 2020, and included thirteen members with backgrounds in physics, engineering, electromagnetics, epidemiology, biostatistics, occupational health, toxicology, medicine, public health policy, business, law, and a representative from the wireless industry. They were tasked with answering eight questions, which included: why the insurance industry has exclusions for RF damages? Why cellphone manufacturers have legal advice warnings about distance between cellphones and the body? Why thousands of peer-reviewed RF studies that show a wide range of health effects, including DNA damage, brain and heart tumors, infertility, and many other ailments, have been ignored by the Federal Communication Commission? Why the FCC guidelines do not account for health effects of wireless? Why the FCC RF limits are 100 times higher than other countries? Why the FCC is ignoring the World Health Organization, the classification of wireless as a possible carcinogen? Why when the world's leading scientists sign an appeal to protect public health from wireless radiation, nothing has been done? And why the health effects of ever-growing numbers of pulse signals riding on the electromagnetic waves has not been explored? Early on in their research, the commission learned that they could not discuss 5G without including all things wireless. The commission concluded that all things emitting radio frequency radiation needed to be considered together because of the interaction of all these waves. At the heart of their discussion was whether or not RF affects humans, animals, and nature. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Schnabel, and my job is a little bit easier here because a lot of the things that have been said are right here in front of me also. But in the same commission that she was talking about, their guidance here was basically to help reduce public exposure. And some of the things that they recommended, and I thought these were good, engage the US government to require the FCC to do an independent review of the RF standards and RF health risks. Require state agencies to include links on their websites about RF radiation from all sources, including 5G, and showing how to minimize exposure, as well as public service announcements warning the RF health risk, especially to children and pregnant women. Require eye level signage for every 5G antenna in the public right-of-way. Schools and public libraries should change from RF wireless connections for computers, laptops, iPads, and other devices to hardwired connections. Then also, they said, collect signal strength measurements, including worst-case conditions for all wireless facilities, and make that information public. Establish new protocols for measuring RF to better evaluate signal characteristics, taking into account high data rate radiation known to be harmful to human health. In closing, I would just like to encourage you as responsible leaders of the city of Mitchell to research the dangerous effects of 5G RF radiation, so that any future decisions concerning the placement or removal of 5G towers would be for the health benefits of all of our city residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Denise Hughes, and I live in the metro area near County Fair. I have been affected by the 5G, and it affects my life daily. I was at the last meeting where the 5G was supposed to be addressed, and I was very disappointed in how long the pot-licensed discussions went on versus how short the 5G was allowed. I don't feel that was adequate or was properly addressed. We cannot have a meaningful discussion on 5G in ten minutes. I don't feel that we are taking citizens' health into proper consideration, and I ask that you put the 5G on the agenda to help properly address with a decent-length discussion timeframe. Just because you aren't being affected by the 5G doesn't mean others aren't. If a cellphone company tells you wireless is safe, it is like a candy bar salesman telling you that candy bars are diet food. Cellphones companies have something to gain by pushing scientific evidence aside and saying wireless is safe. Independent scientists who have nothing to gain by telling the truth, who have amazed eleven thousand pages worth of evidence stating that wireless is completely unsafe and harmful and cannot and should not be ignored. When we allow ourselves to be bought or don't bother to investigate the truth, we are being lazy and not performing our duties and not stewards of our position. When we give up easily stating there is nothing we can do, or we're not being brave, what is our founding fathers had to say? What if they were, I'm sorry, what if they were, what if they said England was too strong and we cannot break free? Step out of our comfort zone and look objectively at the evidence, and we will certainly see that you need to be brave and do something. Sitting back and doing nothing is not the easy way out. But the most harmful path in the long run for your health, be brave, step up, and fight for what you know is right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's David Bowerley, and I'm here to speak to 5G. Good evening. This is gonna be short. It says the statistics are overwhelming. There are 2.7 billion smartphone users around the world. There are 4.4 billion active internet users, equivalent to 57% of the global population. Seventy-seven percent of Americans have smartphones. The popularity of electronic devices is steadily growing, and time spent on them is increasing as well, according to a recent Nielsen study. On average, Americans spend more than eleven hours a day on their electronic devices. That's all I had there. But beans, if we have a little time left, I'd like to speak a little bit on how it's affected me. For the last year and a half, two years, I'd get out of my chair at home and walk. I walk kind of briskly. As soon as I'd stop, whether it was twenty feet or whatever, I'd get dizzy and start spinning. And I've been to ER for this. They say, well, for whatever reason, maybe your blood pressure's dropping, whatever. But as I started to learn some about this, I hardwired all of the devices in my home. And for the most part, that's went away. Unless I come to town and go into an auto parts store, no matter where it is, it'll start out, I'll get a pressure behind my eyes that'll turn into a headache. But like I said, as soon as I get out of my pickup and walk in someplace, stop, everything starts spinning, and I don't have any doubt that this is what it's from. Like I said, you know, for anybody that doubts that, that wants to do an experiment, just hardwire all your devices in your home and see if any of your symptoms lessen or whatever. I mean, that's what I've found. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Higgin, and I was at the last meeting where they had the 5G addressed, and I was kind of disappointed. It seemed like nobody seemed to care. Well, here's a little behind-the-scenes information. The former head of the FCC, Tom Wheeler, said to ABC News on 2020, and I quote, "I mean, I believe that the cellphone is safe. Our industry has gone out and aggressively asked the question, can we find a problem?" And the answer that has come back is that there is nothing that has come of the research that suggests that there is a linkage between wireless phone and health effects," unquote. To say the least, there is no evidence, is a blatant lie. He was told by the scientist, George Carlos, that there are very serious questions with the safety of cellphones. And so to me, the career of Tom Wheeler is an interesting illustration of a very old story in Washington DC. How about the regulatory agencies of the federal government get captured by the very industries they're supposed to regulate? So Wheeler left the wireless industry, later went on to head the FCC. And in the meantime, the other way around happened. The FCC vice chair, Baker, now runs the Wireless Association. That is why the Harvard study on this, by Norman Alster, calls the FCC a captured agency. They've been captured by the industry they're supposed to regulate. And the single best example of this that I can give you is the FCC does not even independently test the radiation levels on these phones. They take what the industry claims and just put it on their website, and that is not good enough. But the part that we're down the road this far, and we're not even testing the cellphones, is like going back to the 80s. They did the same thing, and we're about to make the same mistake with this technology. 5G technology is what will be required to go on the Internet of Things. The Internet of Things is the idea of your smartphone being connected to your smart car and your smart household, so that your appliances, your cellphones, your computers, everything will be connected 24/7. So you can, while you're driving home, turn on your oven, so when you get home, it's nice and warm, and you can make your dinner when you get home. It seems kind of convenient, but there is a health risk to this convenience. And I ask you to consider really researching what you've been given. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Steve Sipson. You already heard tonight that there's studies out that say that cellphones can cause cancer. Those, that was a study, the biggest study ever done by the American, US government by the National Toxicology Program. Now, the point that I want to add to this is that, just like the tobacco companies, which added nicotine, which is addictive, to their cigarettes, today, we have companies deliberately addicting people to the cell technology. Sean Parker, Facebook's founding president, talked about how Facebook was deliberately designed to hook users. He stated, "How do we consume as much of your time and conscious attention as possible? We need to sort of give you a little dopamine hit every once in a while because someone liked or commented on a photo or a post that you put up." And that's not gonna get you, and that's gonna get you to contribute more content. And that's gonna get you more likes and comments. It's called a social validation feedback. And he also said that they were exploiting a vulnerability in human psychology. And he stated, "God only knows what it's doing to your children's brains." Well, the Chinese government did a study on TikTok. Some researchers analyzed college students. They gave them videos they liked and took brain scans. It showed certain section of the brain associated with addiction was let up. Also in America, TikTok is under investigation by a bipartisan group of state attorney generals to determine if the popular short-form video platform negatively affects the health of their younger users. So like cigarettes, there's companies addicting people to use the technology that we're concerned is causing cancer. Last month, or six weeks ago, I attended a council meeting, and there's like forty-plus agenda items. Only one had a time limit. All the rest had some very interesting discussion from members of this council. And I think this 5G issue deserves some serious thought from you people on the council and some serious discussion on this issue going forward. And I thank you, I know some of you people, I know your hearts and your minds, you want to do what's best, and I believe what's best is to take this issue very seriously, because I've done some research on it, and I think we need to have a very thorough discussion about any activity regarding 5G going forward in Mitchell, South Dakota. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Thompson. I'm a resident of the Third Ward. I'm a resident of the Third Ward. I was at the meeting a few weeks back when 5G was on the agenda. I was more than disappointed after sitting here for three and a half hours, listening to people bigger about pot license, to see that you limited the 5G discussion to such a short amount of time, which I believe was 10 minutes. And then you closed. We did not even get the chance to discuss it. I know you blame Beth and Sonia, but you have the ability to extend any discussion as needed. It totally appeared to me that it was a planned situation to shut them down. It seems that you don't think this is a topic of interest to you and you don't care about the thousands of pages of evidence against the safety of 5G and the residents of Mitchell who are having issues and the fact that the FCC has lost its lawsuit last summer over the fact that their guidelines on safety was severely outdated. I am more than disappointed in the representation of our community. I feel you should be listening and doing all you can to the residents' health. These are the people who have voted you into office. I expect you to do better, and I expect you to put 5G on the agenda for at least an hour discussion to answer questions and for you to question us about the things that you don't understand. If you want citizens to take an interest in your meetings and in the community and to show up at meetings, you need to listen to them. If you want respect, you need to respect those who you are supposed to be representing. You are elected to represent us and not ignore us. 5G and other wireless is not safe for anyone, whether you feel the effects of it or not. Eventually, everyone will feel the effects, but then it will be way too late. After you feel the effects, damage has already been done to your body and to your own personal DNA. If we don't listen to those who are suffering now, the rest of the population will end up in the same boat and those who are the ones that are warning us from the beginning. Except those people who probably won't be here with us any longer unless wireless has been unsafe and it is only getting more dangerous with the higher frequencies it goes. I have many friends who are suffering with headaches, tremors, nausea, aches and pains, anxiety, brain fog, bladder incompetence, incontinence, and sleeping problems, all of which have come on since last year and have worsened since January. I don't think anyone wants to have these kinds of problems. Let's not disregard the people who are suffering, but instead look to the evidence and take some action on this agenda for the people who have voted you into office.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nancy Talsma, and I'm in Word Four. And I know that you've been given my story before and how the 5G, or the tower on 37 bypass and 15th Avenue has affected my life negatively and my husband's. And so I'm just here, so many things have been said already. My heart goes out to the young girl because I, in 2020, when that tower went up close to our house, I started noticing things with unusual tightness in my arms and tightness in my side. And then I'd lay in bed and my legs would tighten up instead of relax. I had pressure in the back of my brain. I went to doctors and they would tell me I'm doing actually better for the things that I had been going through. You're doing better. And so I walked out and I said, but why am I so tired? I had a hard time focusing on just making the simple things of a daily routine to get through them or to remember to do them. And I had to drive my husband to his office. I remember this started in September of 2020, and in 2021, I drove my husband to his office in Sioux Falls, and I could not remember the route to get him there. And I had been there before. That's how fast I had digressed from September to April. And so I'm asking because someone brought up to ask that the towers be relocated. I talked to my neighbor who just moved in from the Letcher area, Woonsock area, last fall, and her husband was diagnosed with cancer, and there's a straight Beamer to their house. And she just told me last month that he was diagnosed with cancer. I just asked that you would maybe talk to Larry Thompson and get the information from him. He's knowledgeable in this, and ask him if these towers that you are allowing to go up are needed and necessary to help us in any way with our efficiency with our internet and our telephones and just take the information that he gives you because he's very knowledgeable in this area seriously. And again, if it is possible to remove that tower from the bypass of 37 and 15th area, I know that the people in our area would really appreciate it because I've talked to people who have businesses in that area and they have health issues too because of that location that have kicked in on their lives also since it's been put in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Riddle. I've lived in Mitchell 47 years, and I'm just here to express my concerns about the 5G coming to Mitchell. I've read about the studies and I've talked, that they have talked about the towers not being regulated and how they are dangerous. We know that Mitchell does have several big towers, but the city doesn't seem to know about it. Your job is to know about it and how are you going to keep, if you don't know, how are you going to keep us safe? And we should be aware of the happenings in our town to be kept safe. So in Mitchell, it's my understanding that the City Council cannot regulate the big towers and they don't have the power to regulate what's on the towers, but they can the small So I really don't want the small ones or the 5G ones going up around Mitchell when they haven't been proven. Also, the cellphones we know emit radiation, which is harmful, we all know that. The towers would be even worse because they are stronger and they're shorter, the big ones are shorter wavelengths, so they're more intense and they affect the human cells, all animals, as well as our environment. So I am in hopes that the City Council can do some research, the effects of these towers and the radiation on our community. Can you provide any research showing that the towers are safe without it being flyers or propaganda from the wireless industry, but actually scientific proof from independent scientists? I do appreciate your time and respect your leadership to address this issue. Thank you.
My name is Beth Bauer. I'm in Word Four. When I was told that we would be on the agenda, I was told we had 10 minutes and that if the other side showed up, I had five minutes. And that led me to believe I'd be addressing some issues I felt needed addressing and the other side would do the same, and then there would be a discussion. So clearly 10 minutes for 5G is not enough. We need more time. So some of my questions are this. Do you have a 5G plan or guideline established? I think we would all like to see that. Do you have an agreement with Verizon or other wireless companies? Has the city received any funds to put 5G small cells in? Have there been any applications or permits for small cells in Mitchell? Those are some questions that we need to answer, have answers to. I'm asking if you're willing to actually do something, like other cities and communities, other people have brought that up to you and other countries have done in regards to protecting the residents, rather than throwing up your hands and saying, there's nothing we can do, because that's not true. You have more power than you think you do in this topic, and I don't think you should be content to sit back and watch people get sick and die, knowing you could do something. Do you realize that ignoring those of us who are concerned and have emailed you and calling you is not legal for you to ignore us? You have to, you have to talk with your constituents, you have to respond. It's your jobs. If you sit here and think it's not bothering you, you're actually wrong. It's an invisible threat, but because you haven't done the research or you don't know exactly all about this, you don't realize it's eroding your DNA as we speak. If you started in a genetically better position than those of us who are already suffering, you can count your blessings, but don't discount us. We are the canaries warning you of what is ahead if you don't take notice and do something to stop it. If you continue to do nothing, you will one day be fighting for your life as I currently am, and it will be too late for you. The damage is done and you'll die. Maybe you don't care if I die, maybe you don't, that doesn't bother you, but it bothers our Heavenly Father. And maybe it won't be you who gets sick in your family, maybe it will be your children or your grandchildren, and you'll have to watch them suffer, knowing you could have at least tried to do something about this, but you didn't. It may be too late for me, but I fight for all those behind me who have to suffer as I have, die a senseless and painless, painful death from this reversible mess we find ourselves in due to seeking a cheap wireless way versus fiber optic or hardwired options. You need to stop listening to the industry who's profiting from our declining health and listening to the scientists who have studied wireless. America needs to stop being lazy and cheap and do the hard work to preserve future generations in our world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City officials. I'm Scott Bauer, a ward without representation on the 5G topic. I say that not because I don't have representative assigned to me, but because no one is representing us on the 5G topic and no council member has ever responded to my wife's last emails. They told her that they were done talking about this. Since 5G has been installed and deployed, I've been getting headaches almost daily, and it's harder to concentrate along with some memory recall problems. I've taken additional precautions for mine and my wife's health within our homes and our phones. We don't utilize any wireless, so we don't use Wi-Fi at home, we don't use any Bluetooth devices. Our home is 100% hardwired to the internet. We also make deliberate decisions on electronic devices in our homes, so we don't and never will have any smart appliance. There's no need for a smart fridge, smart oven, anything like that. We do have a smart TV, but it's in an outlet that we can turn off whenever we're not using it. My coworkers who live and work in the Twin Cities in Minnesota are having even more issues than, since they are living and being exposed to more wireless than I am with the Twin Cities just being more concentrated. There are many days when my coworkers can't remember steps to correct a problem, which I know they've corrected before, they've, you know, I've helped them with before. When my wife and I, when we moved to Mitchell in the fall of 2020, it was an improvement to both of our health. However, it's gotten worse since January. We also had a friend stay with us last summer who had an AT&amp;T phone and they received 5G signal in our home and in town. So there's no doubt that 5G is here in Mitchell. My wife has provided those pictures of proof to you last summer, and yet after that, and as recent as this year, it's still being stated that 5G doesn't exist in Mitchell. I truly don't understand how you can sit there and say things that go against the evidence to the contrary. You can say it's ignorance because we have, or you cannot say it's ignorance because we have educated you. So it's just a lack of concern for the residents of the city or just bad politics. Either way, you need to adjust this by making better decisions with the massive amount of evidence that we have provided you with. And also, you know, I know it's kind of hard to see, but there's a graph here that shows basically polar opposites. There's for radio frequency research, non-industry studies, so studies that are independent, not associated to any wireless communications, show that there's a, 70% of the studies show that there's a harmful effect and 30% have no effect. But yet, the industry studies, so the ones that are being supplied by the FCC, the ones that are being supplied by Verizon, show that only 32% have harmful effects and 70, or 68% of the studies show no effect. But yet, they still have effect. Even if they show a majority in their own funding, they still show.
Thank you.
Sonia Van Erdwick from Mitchell Township. Of course, you know, I'm here to talk about 5G and actually just in general, the health of the community. When you guys had us on the agenda for 10 minutes, it was absolutely disgusting. I'm going to say disgusting because we weren't respected. You said 10 minutes, but nothing else on the agenda was given a limit of time. And just like a couple other people said, this was all planned. You planned this, so we were at the end of a three-hour meeting. You didn't give citizen input, so there are people that came that were ignored. And as you can see tonight, I didn't know everybody was showing up, but there's a lot of people that showed up because those people didn't get to talk before. And when we come up here and we present to you thousands of documents of research, not from the FCC saying it's okay, but actual researchers, and you hear from actual people. I mean, I told you my story about my tremors, okay? I can name all kinds of people that I know. I can tell you college students that are in dorms with Wi-Fi, they're having anxiety, depression, difficulty sleeping, headaches, menstrual problems. I mean, you name it, they're having problems. But nobody's picking it up as that because it's not on people's radar. It's not on the physician's radars, it's not on the nurse's radar, it's not on the PA's radar, it's not on anybody's radar because they haven't been given the information. We think that you're smart enough to take this information and do something because we know each and every one of you care deeply about this community. But if something's not done, it's going to be just like Beth said. I mean, I can tell myself when I'm on my laptop for work or my phone, I start having tremors again. I wear this necklace all the time. I have device, I have special stickers for my phone, for my laptop, for my router. I won't allow 5G in my house. And yes, like he said, we do have a 5G tower from Verizon, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, and it has been verified. We've never said that there's small towers of 5G, but if we allow those to come into this community, if you think that there's problems now, the problems will just absolutely skyrocket. And I just implore you guys to please, 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 please look at the information that we gave you, because to say that there isn't side effects is to just show the ignorance. And I don't want to say that you're ignorant, but to deny the information, and you saw the thousands of pages I brought here last time, to deny that is just to kind of like slap us in the face. And I think you guys are better than that. I think you care, and I wish you would please, please find it in your heart to listen to these people, to really take it to heart, and it's okay to say, okay, we do need to look at this because we respect you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Isabella Stewart. I'm in Word Four. I've spoken to you before. I'm 20 years old and I have personally been affected by wireless and I have hyper-electro sensitivity, which is a disability recognized by the federal government. I was in college in Rapid City when I became too ill to continue due to continuous migraines, brain fog, dizziness, chronic fatigue, and nausea. I came home to Mitchell to recover and hope to go back. It became very obvious that not only would I never be able to return to college, but I cannot be outside my home for more than a few hours at a time due to too much wireless in the environment. We have gone through great pains to keep wireless out of our home. Everything in our home is hardwired. We don't use any wireless devices. We have protection on our cellphones. I cannot be around any 5G phones, I cannot be around Bluetooth, and we do not have Wi-Fi or any smart devices. If I am out of my home or use any of the devices I just spoke about, I will get a migraine that can take many days to get over. All of my symptoms will come back and I am miserable. How can I work anywhere for employment unless from home with these limitations? School would be limited to online, except I cannot sit in front of a computer screen all day because I get sick from that also. It has destroyed every part of my life. I cannot go places where there are crowds due to how many cellphones are present. I get so sick at the doctor's office because of the close proximity of a 5G cell tower that the entire right side of my body doesn't want to work. It becomes difficult to walk, and I cannot use my dominant hand to write because it is my right side that gets affected. You can look at me and say to yourselves, she looks fine, but you could do the same about someone who is diabetic. Just because you can't see what is happening to me until it gets really bad doesn't mean it isn't happening. Just like you can't tell someone has diabetes until they begin to shake from their sugar being too low, just because they aren't shaking doesn't mean that they still don't have diabetes. Just because you aren't being affected physically doesn't mean I am not, nor does it mean you won't be affected someday because you are being flooded with wireless constantly. Likewise, if a diabetic person told you, you should quit eating sugar so much or you would become diabetic, and you continue to eat sugar endlessly, you would become diabetic, whether you like it or not. You cannot continue to gorge yourself on something bad and expect to not be affected. No one in their right mind would constantly eat sugar. So why aren't we stopping the massive and constant onslaught of wireless damage? It doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council? Mr. Bender.
Hello, everybody.
Just, I don't know what to say, other than technology is going to push its way through. Um, there's no stopping it. Um, obviously, there's, the community has concerns about this, and I think it's your obligation to do your due diligence and actually look into this and see if whether or not this is a concern that we should, that you should, uh, address. Um, I don't know. That's about it. I think you guys really actually should look at this and because the people are concerned about it. Right, that is your job. So that's about it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Board of Adjustment, entertain a motion for City Council to recess and sit at Board of Adjustment.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. McArdle. Further discussion? All's favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All's nay? Motion carried. Excuse me. Action to set date for Board of Adjustment Hearing Six, Six Twenty-Two. Fairveilleski has applied for a front yard setback variance of 19 feet versus 25 feet for a front porch addition located at 497th Avenue, legally described as Lot Four, Block Four, Burrs Addition, City, Mitchell, Davis County, South Dakota Real Property Zone, R2.
Move to set the date.
Motion by Mrs. Chark, second by Mr. Rice. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? All's favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All's nay? Motion carried. Recumbent City Council, entertain a motion for Board of Adjustment to adjourn City Council Recumbent Regular Session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. McArdle. Further discussion? All's favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All's nay? Motion carried. Action to approve application for renewal of malt beverage licenses.
Mayor and Council, Chief Caster, Police Department, we have no concerns about these renewals.
Motion by Mr. McArdle, second by Mr. Allen. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address any of these? All's favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All's nay? Motion carried. Excuse me. Action to approve special event for the Corn Palace Stampede Rodeo Community Kickoff July 12, 2022.
This was discussed earlier. I'd just like to note that the map presented on the council agenda is incorrect. It is, does not include a closure of Main Street. It is just for the, uh, Corn Palace Plaza and Plaza Parking Lot.
Motion by Mr. Rice.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion?
Um, yeah. This is where the kickoff's going to be. Do we know where the rodeo's going to be?
The regular ground.
Okay.
The current ground.
Okay.
For this year. They, they are in order. And when the judge is going to rule, they decided to have a jury trial, so switched modes and went to juries.
Oh. When does that happen?
November.
Ah.
That's all I know on this. Okay?
I hadn't heard.
Okay. Anybody in the House wish to address this? All's favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All's nay? Motion carried. Action to approve request by Mitchell Housing Inc., there, Mitchell Area Housing, Inc., for the city of Mitchell to waive two nuisance property abatement assessments.
Good evening. Jerry Beck with the, uh, Mitchell Area Development Corporation here this evening on behalf of Mahi, Mitchell Area Housing Incorporated, requesting your consideration of waiving a nuisance property assessment. Um, the lion's share is it for removing the house at 1301 East Birch. Um, and there was also a mowing charge. Mahi has now, um, acquired this lot, and we're doing our best to keep the costs as, as low as possible to, um, build a more affordable or less expensive house on that lot. Um, leave it at that and try to answer any questions you have.
Yep.
I've been sitting in on these, uh, on our meetings and stuff, and I think it's just a great thing for Mitchell. They're cleaning up lots, um, eyesore lots, um, the one on, uh, over by Hitchcock Park. I went over and looked at that one. That's actually got two trees that are, uh, one's kind of an expensive one. I think we could get 500 to 1,000 on it, uh, to move it. Uh, they got two really nice trees that are in the middle of the lot. I don't know what, well, but anyway, it's, uh, very interesting. I think that what they're doing is a great thing for Mitchell. You know, I think we can, especially the nuisance and, uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Sabers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address it, other than Mrs. Beck? Okay. All's favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All's nay? Motion carried. Action to-
Thank you very much.
Yep. Action to approve request to, for release of easement in Woods First Edition Block Two Lots Nine and Ten.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Joe Schrader, Public Works Director, uh, Chuck Macheski is requesting that two and a half feet either side of a 20-foot easement, uh, be released as shown on, uh, the exhibit that, yep, right there, just off Quiet Lane. Um, the purpose of the release is provide additional room to construct a residential dwelling. Um, the easement is for a city storm sewer, um, but the reduction in the width will not affect, um, the storm sewer that's within that easement, and staff recommends council approval and to grant authorization for the mayor to sign the document.
Move to approve. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. McArdle. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? All's favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All's nay? Motion carried. Action to approve quote for 20, uh, 223 North Main Windows Project 2022 dash 24. This is the Western Building, I believe, right, Mr. Schrader?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, um, as you remember, we did receive a $25,000 grant previously, uh, which was approved and finalized, uh, for this project. Um, since then, uh, the building's been transferred to MADC and sold to a private developer. MADC requested that the city assist in a pass-through grant, uh, for the, for the Deadwood Grant again. We were awarded $15,000 for window repairs. Uh, we requested, um, quotes, um, from different contractors in town. We received two back, uh, one being from Doug Driggs, who was low at 72,500. Um, the other was from Pitt's Design Build. Um, the project has been limited, uh, reduced in size to, um, exhaust the $15,000 in the grant, and it's a 50-50 match. Um, so we have limited that to the third and fourth floors only, and city staff recommends awarding the project to Doug Driggs in an amount of $34,417.87. Um, and again, this is no cost to the city. It's just a pass-through.
Is there specs on this, Joel, that there's such a difference in price?
So the windows for historical are meant to be redone. Um, basically, they remove them. They fix up the wood. If there's any rotten wood, they replace it. Um, Mr. Driggs is just more accustomed to this type of work. Um, I don't want to say a do-it-yourselfer, but he's, he's really good at this kind of work, and he likes to do it more as maybe a hobby that he gets paid to do. Um, and he's been really good. I know he all, he has also done, he worked on the building across the street. Uh, he did the south, or excuse me, the north and the east windows already in that building, and they look great.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? All's favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All's nay? Motion carried. Action to approve agreement eight, 2022, 22, public safety maintenance contract, Chief Caster.
Uh, Mayor and Council, Chief Caster of the Police Department. What you have before you tonight is the service contract for HVAC maintenance from Tessiers. Uh, we had Tessiers as that contractor in 2020. Last year, we did not have a contract with them. Uh, as you can see, it was from March 4th and some delay of some type before we received it. But, uh, since 2020, the amount of that contract has only gone up $69.25, so we recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Chark.
Second.
Second by Mr. McArdle. Further discussion?
Yeah. Um, so do we do maintenance contracts for all the city buildings in this fashion? Or is this something we're looking at more?
Had one in the past, correct? Chief Caster?
Uh, former Chief Still was the one that explored this. I can't explain or speak to any of that, but prior to that, we did not have one.
So yes and no?
I mean-
These are starting to get in-
Yep. I understand trying to stay ahead of the curve a little bit maybe on those, but I was just wondering if they applied to other buildings.
We do have one in the Corn Palace.
Johnson.
Which is-
Johnson Controls.
Does that service correct? Um, does the senior center have one? No, they don't.
What about, uh, Park and Rec? Uh, the Rexson?
I don't think the Rexson has one. They call-
We do have one piece of equipment on at the airport that we do contract.
They do contract, huh?
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Anybody in the House wish to address this? All's favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All's nay? Motion carried. Action to approve agreement eight, 2022 dash 23, Lake Mitchell Restoration Phase Two Project 2021-20 with VAR Engineering. Mr. Schrader?
Yes. So this will be the next step in our, uh, Lake Mitchell dredge design. Uh, we've been calling it Phase Two. This is a recap, Phase One, of the design agreement, analyzed hydraulic versus mechanical dredging, um, the dredge spoil sites and drawdown feasibility. Uh, Phase Two will focus on Lake Drawdown Project and continue the design of the dredging project and water quality valuation. Uh, the Lake Drawdown Design will encompass the selection of drawdown method, uh, geotechnical evaluation of the dam and bankment. So for digging to the dam, uh, we want to know what that's all going to entail. Um, impacts to existing lake, lake infrastructure such as retaining walls, uh, the water supply to Poet, hydraulic modeling, permitting and plan specifications, which are ready to bid. Um, this, this, uh, portion of the project is the, the most labor-intensive. Um, one of the big issues with the drawdown is, uh, the plans for the existing spillway are, um, lacking per se, so there's going to need to be a lot of effort put into, um, looking at that structure and depending upon where they decide to do the drawdown and those types of things. That'll be their primary focus right away.
Joel, can I ask a quick question about that specifically?
Yes.
Will they use the current dam and put that drawdown breach into that? Is that what-
So there's, there's-
Will they build a hole?
There's two separate options. They'll, they'll use the existing. You'll basically, you'll put a hole somewhere within the spillway or the spillway structure. Um, but basically the concrete retaining wall's on the side. Yep.
Mr. Lund is here for one and a half.
Yeah. If there's any specific technical questions that you're not satisfied with my answer, VAR is here. Or if I speak incorrectly, you can, you can step in.
Joel, how long, uh, the project? Is it six months, eight months, 10 months?
This portion of the design, we are expecting to be completed in March.
March of 2023.
And that, and this will, for this portion of the, the drought, drawdown project, this will be a biddable project ready to go. So it'll be complete, ready to bid.
In March.
Correct. And they plan to work through cost estimates to allow us to budget dollars for this project, um, as part of the 23 season, if, if you do want to put that into the budget.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, water, the water quality portion, uh, will entail additional sediment data collection and evaluations, water quality modeling, and a car population survey and assessment. Um, they will also continue with the dredge design, looking at the spoil site, um, also potentially, um, looking at, um, better ways of getting material out of the lake, whether it's more quantity with higher, um, phosphorus holding material, those types of things, to see if there's benefits moving in those directions. Um, so with that, um, staff does recommend City Council approval of the attached agreement from VAR, the amount not to exceed $767,500, um, for the engineering services described in there. And I also broke down the individual phases of that contract. Um, talking about funding, uh, we do have 661,000 budgeted, so that leaves 106,500. Um, and we are proposing that those additional funds come from the designated future capital project settlement set aside.
So with this all said, when would, ballpark, when would they think they'd start dredging if we went ahead of this?
Uh, realistically, fall of '23 would probably be the best-case scenario.
Isn't that a little soon? Shouldn't we be getting the stuff coming into the lake clean before the dredging process?
And we, we are actively working on that. We have our wetland project on the Kelly property.
Will take place this summer.
Yep. We're also, um, a little later on in the council meeting, you'll see that we're, we are requesting additional non-point source funds that will look at additional wetlands even further upstream. Um, we are working with upstream property owners on, um, their property with NRCS, Ducks Unlimited, those types of entities, um, with their programs that they have, um, and helping, you know, plant, uh, cropland back to grassland and filtration areas and those types of things. Go ahead.
I noticed in the fire still park, um, talk for the spoil site that there are soil moorings there, and this cost does not include the removal of trees necessary-
Correct.
-for doing that. So is that going to be Park and Rec money? Where is that money coming from for the tree removal?
So if there's an ideal area that they do want to, to get to, basically, yeah, we would look at removing trees and getting them to those areas.
Any idea?
We have had discussions with the National Guard about using their, using them in their annual training.
To do some clearing.
And they, they are amenable to discussing that, which would-
So try and find some good way to do it.
Correct.
Okay.
We're trying to keep the cost as low as we possibly can.
This tree removal ultimately would help us, uh, with the project cost moving forward as well. Yep. Yep.
Did you want to say that, Eric?
I'm here. Come on. Hi, everyone. Eric Olney, Bar Engineering Company. I think Joe did a good job describing it. I can certainly answer any more technical discussion, otherwise I, um, to the, to the tree clearing piece, too, um, our boring locations won't be super specific, so it'll be, we'll find locations that don't require, you know, a massive removal of the forest until it's needed. But, um, I'll take questions, but I do also just want to say thank you for the opportunity to continue to work on this project with you.
Didn't want you to come all that way and not give-
Joe said if, if best-case scenario, it's a, a long drive and a easy meeting, so that's okay, too.
How deep, how deep when they get the dredging, the water remain on the east end, like for the irrigation for Cadwell and, and, uh, and Lakeview Golf Course?
How deep, the, the deepest part of the lake?
Is there water, is there still going to be enough water for them to bowl?
I think what he's saying is if, if we draw the lake down, we would probably likely have to extend the pipes out into the water, I think.
Correct.
Given where they are, we'd have to see where, where all that shakes out.
Yep.
Right. There's not just Poet water needed. There's water needed for-
Yeah. The water, water use agreements. Yep. That's all part of this first sort of, part of this is figuring out how to make all of that work, uh, in conjunction with the drawdown.
Yeah. We have a private agreement.
I, I guess another question, part of it is the, the fish study and the KARP study. How will that work and who actually that's contracted out to some?
Yeah. We would hire a subconsultant. I think their name is KARP Solutions, I think, is, is who we would choose to use. Um, it's, uh, so they go out there and do a, um, a net survey, right, to sort of figure out, and it has to be in the early part of the spawning season. That, I'm going to get really far beyond my expertise here really quickly, but they'll go out there and do a survey that tells you how many there are, you know, types and size and age. And then we can look at that and this, and, and basically ask ourselves, is the population of the rough fish enough that it could also be creating these turbation issues in the sediment itself? And then sort of re, even if we do a partial removal, would it sort of stir them back up? Um, so it's, it's one tool in the toolbox for dealing with water quality issues is to try to perhaps get some of the rough fish out of there.
That's actually a question that I really don't think I've heard the answer to. What if, I mean, where do, this really sounds stupid. Where do all the fish go when there's no water in the lake? I mean, do we, and, and how do we repopulate it with the ones that we want? And can we keep those sheep, what are they called? Sheep cats that are, that all died that one time?
Yeah, there, I mean, there'll be an impact on the fish population by doing this. There's, we've had discussions with Game Fishing Park early. I think they're generally supportive of the project and are willing to help with, uh, whether it's a restocking or, uh, um, you know, other type of, of improvements. But yeah, that's, there, there will be an impact to them.
Game Fishing Parks is interested in helping us improve fishing, the fishing quality on Lake Mitchell habitat, and I would assume they would start restocking as well. They really don't do that anymore.
So the ones that are in there will just die?
It depends on the extent of the drawdown. I mean, they'll, you know- I mean, they'll, you know, make their way towards the parts of the lake that maintain water, but there will likely be a fish kill off, yes.
You've heard it's like shooting fish in a barrel?
Some will probably head to a smokehouse, too.
Yeah, I'm sure they will.
I know a lot of people that would take them.
Winter would be the worst.
They take them off a digstone and they bring them back in pickup loads.
So I'm imagining with that drawdown breach that they, a lot of them would just be able to swim on down the stream. I'm imagining, is that true?
Have a little water slide.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, no, I mean, you're right, there will be an outlet, and so, yeah, they can make their way downstream to some extent. I mean, they're not necessarily going to know that that's their option and choose to do it right away, I suppose.
Well, all the water is going.
Yeah, I mean, our plan would be to lower it relatively slowly because that's going to have the most stability for the shoreline. If you lower it too quickly, then you have all kinds of stability issues, but yeah.
Have we settled, I remember at least two, if not three, different options to draw the lake down, and one of them was a permanent theoretical gate that we could control in the future. Have we settled in on, we have not totally settled in on that?
So that's...
That's what this study is going to...
That's really the very first phase here. What we would do is kind of put together an evaluation. We'll enhance what we put in the preliminary report that was kind of high level conceptual, take those options being from as simple as just pumping it, just siphoning, to doing these more permanent robust options, like you had mentioned, one of them being a gate structure. Put together kind of an evaluation of the benefits, the costs, the drawbacks. I mean, so you had mentioned that that would give the city a long-term, you know, sort of permanent benefit to be able to manipulate the lake elevation. And so, you know, early in our phase, in this scope of work, what we would try to do is get to that decision in the first X number of months, and then that would really drive what needs to be done going forward. You know, more engineering associated with the more sort of robust options, but likely coming with benefits.
And I think it's important to note that the drawdown will help us with future maintenance of our wetland, so that way we can get in there and clean out and harvest that material that settles, you know, right upstream of the lake, and we can do it in the dry and get to everything.
It also, depending on which one we do, it ends up saving us on the marina. We do have grant, you know, cover half the cost.
And it'll also save us a lot of cost to allow contractors to look at the bottom of the lake, allow the material to dry out, and the contractors be able to see the material that they'll actually be moving before they bid the project.
We may find out that the more expensive option actually saves us enough to pay for itself.
How's that?
Because the work they're able to do, what it would save you on the bidding process, they would be able to save enough that that would actually, the more expensive option would be the better way to go, that the money saved and what they're able to determine, as well as there would be a savings in what gets done to build a breakwater for a marina if that's drained down.
The drier the material is, the less, the less weight you are hauling out of the lake, which in turn then is less expensive.
And we don't know how far we got to go down to dig down to get down to dry ground, do you?
I think we have a pretty good indication from the surveys that we have, but being dry will just allow us to tighten up that survey that much more, allow more accurate numbers.
And I think the other benefit is that a contractor with some of these more robust options of controlling water, you can control higher flow rates, and so they'll have less risk of, you know, sort of being washed out from a big storm event or a snow melt event and have to sort of stop, right? If they, if it can be X thousand cubic feet per second of water can be diverted, they'll have more certainty and, to the mayor's point, we were talking about dredging a million yards, two million yards, you know, whatever it ends up being, you save a dollar a yard, fifty cents a yard, it adds up really quickly with just sort of the economy of scale with the size of project that we're talking about. So that's why we're thinking that this option, you know, might end up looking attractive, even though it might have a higher upfront cost.
So what are we looking for? Are we looking for a motion to approve?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Most by Mr. Church.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this?
Audience dwindled down after the...
All is fair to the most significant saying aye?
Aye.
Proposed nay? Motion carried. Action to approve resolution R twenty... Thank you, Eric.
Thanks for being here.
Action to approve resolution R twenty-two-two twenty-five, appointment of Mayor Everson as applicant agent for hazard mitigation grant ER forty-five twenty-seven.
Mr. Mayor, Council, we are requesting approval to apply for a hazard mitigation grant and allowing the mayor to sign these documents. This grant will be used to build a hundred and fifty-eight person occupancy safe room at the Lake Mitchell campground. This project has been identified in the pre-disaster mitigation plan which council adopted on August sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. This grant, this is an opportunity that we probably might not see again this year. It will be funded one hundred percent eligible costs by outside entities. Typically, there is at least a fifteen percent local share, but the city, as far as this goes, we are adding in some additional items that will not be covered as part of the grant. There's a few bathrooms and showers, just to make it a better environment for the campers that we will have to pay for. The estimated project cost is six hundred and four thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars for one thousand nine hundred square foot building, of which we're estimating the city would be responsible for roughly eighty-one thousand or thirteen point four percent. The project would be in twenty-three or twenty-twenty-four, depending on when the projects are awarded. This can be a lengthy review process, and we do recommend that council appoint and approve the mayor to be authorized agent to sign for the grant.
Moved approved.
Most by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Barrington.
What's the plan if, so we apply for it and I have no problem with that, but they come back and deny us, then what?
Back to square one. We don't have a...
So we're concerned of the FEMA guidelines only if they pay for it?
Yeah. That sums it up.
Well, I...
Yes, this, in essence, there's a pot of money that FEMA has that they're going to...
And I understand, having a place at the campground, severe weather, what just happened in the last week, those types of things, and have, if it's our campground, and it is, to have a safe place for them and...
I mean, it's easy if you, if you go back to the percentage that we show, it'd be easy to calculate what we would, our cost share would be if it was the fifteen percent. Not to say we can't go for it next year, it'll just be a different cost share.
Okay.
Years ago, this is before your time, Joe, they talked about one of these, that's a soccer fields complex out there.
And that's also an area that's identified on our plan, and someday we will look at...
That might be something FEMA can do for us there, too. And that might even get more important if the rodeo ends up moving out.
Now, I would like to give recognition to Mark Genegas and the Planning and Development District, who've been working hard on this.
How come you haven't spoken tonight, Mr. Genegas?
It wasn't my turn.
Oh, okay.
And Kevin Nelson, Kevin Nelson's been working with us, too.
All right. You didn't even come up for the planning zoning stuff, I'm disappointed.
Okay, further discussion? All is fair to the most significant saying aye?
Aye.
Proposed nay? Motion carried. Action to approve resolution R twenty-two twenty-six, plat of lots two A and two B of Rocky Tide Addition to Subdivision of Lot twelve A dash three in the southwest quarter of Section Ten, Township one oh three North Range sixty west of the fifth primary in the city of Mitchell Davis County, South Dakota, as requested by Todd Boyd. Mr. Genegas, long time no see.
Yes. Planning Commission recommended approval of this, six zero with one absent. You saw this plaque come through at your last meeting, it was Lot one and Lot two. Now they are subdividing Lot two into two A and two B. There is still the ingress and egress along the north side for two A, and for two B, there's the wider egress all the way along the top of that. There is no concerns from Planning Commission at all with this.
Moved approved.
Most by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. Smith. I got that right? Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address it? All is fair to the most significant saying aye?
Aye.
Proposed nay? Motion carried. Action to approve resolution R twenty-two twenty-seven, plat of lots one, two, three, four, five, and six, lot one of Stardust Subdivision, city of Mitchell Davis County, South Dakota, as requested by Jensen Capital and Development LLC.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this, five zero with one absent and one abstaining. This is kind of over by Menards, to the west of Menards there, Jensen Capital lot, this parcel, this bigger parcel, this is the first phase of his development down there, is the six lots right there. The concern with Planning Commission, Urbana Drive, is a township and a city road, which county we already know is, we have to share with them, now you go to township instead of county, and that makes it even more difficult for snow removal, things like that. So the west side is county, east side is city limits, so it's a fifty-fifty road. Jensen knows that if the east, excuse me, the west side ever gets annexed in, then there will be assessment back to the landowners for curb and gutter and that. There is already water and sewer down to those, that's why he would like to do this phase first before he continues out the next. He did say it's about forty-two lots in his total development, or forty-two residences for that area, so this is just the first phase of it.
It's all the gravel.
It's all gravel right now.
City take care of that, or who's going to take care of our road maintenance?
Whoever gets to it first.
Yeah, you know who that's going to be.
Once it, so once it gets past that location, midway through Lot six there is where city property actually starts, so, yeah, right there. He has a plan that the road comes down, makes kind of a U-turn, and then goes out towards Capital Street, so that will all actually be hard surfaced. It's just the stretch from Lot six to Spruce Street won't be hard surfaced, yep.
In this particular situation, I see the city and the city ending up pushing snow in this area, as well as running a blade up and down there every now and then.
We've talked with Mr. Jensen, and he is interested in purchasing the lots that aren't built on out there to be able to annex and do it the right way.
Here, I don't know if there is a wrong or right way, it's just difficult.
Yeah.
Most by Mr. Rice. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address it? All is fair to the most significant saying aye?
Aye.
Proposed nay? Motion carried.
Public hearing for the Mitchell wastewater treatment facility headworks and equalization basin and the implementation of point source measurement. Mr. Trader?
With that, we will start the public hearing. The city of Mitchell is seeking funding from the South Dakota Board of Water and Natural Resources for a project that will include, but is not limited to, major upgrades to the city's wastewater treatment facility headworks and equalization basin and the implementation of non-point source measures. The funds could be either a grant from the state consolidated water facilities construction program or a loan from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, a Clean Water SRF program. The city is seeking up to eighteen million seven hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars from this Clean Water SRF program and two million forty-two thousand from the non-point source program. The expected loan term for the Clean Water SRF loan is one point three seven five percent for thirty years. The Board of Water and Natural Resources may forgive all or a portion of the loan principal for the loan. The amount source of funds and terms will be determined by the Board of Water and Natural Resources when the application is presented at a scheduled board meeting, and we believe that meeting will be towards the end of June. The purpose of this public hearing is to discuss the proposed project, the proposed financing, and the source of repayment for the loan. So we already have ten million built into this for surcharge amount in our rates. We are seeking an additional two dollars surcharge and a twenty-nine cent increase to the rate. As you know, we awarded this project, I believe it was in April. The next, the next portion of the agenda or the next item, we'll go more into rates and identify some other items to talk about. With that, we will open it up to any public comment. Being none, we can close the public hearing and move into the resolution. Resolution twenty-two dash thirty, authorize the city council to approve and execute an application for financial assistance through the South Dakota Board of Water and Natural Resources. The resolution also designates the mayor to execute and submit the application on behalf of the city and to certify and sign payment requests in the event financial assistance is awarded for the project. We talked about the application, the non-point source measures, along with the loan term. Staff does recommend approval. With that, there is information there on the bid. The bid came in at fifteen million seven hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred dollars, which the bid was awarded to PKG. The total project cost came in at eighteen million seven eighty-nine thousand after all soft costs were incorporated. And again, we are requesting an additional two dollars surcharge and a unit rate of twenty-nine cents added to the rates. And along with this, with this staff request, there is additional information as far as future projects moving forward and how the rate structure could potentially look through the next three to four years. We added a, an analysis of the rates from, I believe, nineteen ninety-three to present along with the proposed rate increases. It shows to be at where we are at proposed in twenty-twenty-six, we would have had to increase rates at a steady pace of five point four percent. And then the last item we have is Stephanie reached out to other municipalities and received updated rates. The table that we showed previously was outdated, so this is where we are sitting now with the cities shown in this table. Even after all the rates are incorporated, we are still number four from the highest, with being a couple cents away from Brandon.
And that's with them not increasing rates at all and ours going...
I believe so.
Yeah, so that's just comparing our twenty twenty-six to everybody else's twenty twenty-two. All of our discussions at the city manager's level or city administrator group is that everybody is applying their ARPA money towards their SRF projects so they can also take advantage of this same grant. So you'll see all of these rates that we are comparing to are going to have to go up, too.
And Stephanie, if you want to go back to the project list?
Yeah.
So all the projects shown from the dark gray line below, with the exception of the bottom four, those projects were the application that gave us the seventeen million dollar grant.
Oh, no, so everything except for the ones that are...
Everything above that blue side of it.
So projects, those projects, if they are not implemented, that would affect our overall grant amount.
And those projects are the ones that we show on the gray on the other sheet? Or do we go all the way through?
We go all the way through the bottom.
You know, I've had a number of people talk to me about this, as you might imagine, and when they understand that component, it's, you know, there's this level of understanding that they, they don't like it, but they get it. And I just feel like it'd be really helpful if that was something that was more well-known or broadcast more widely so that as a whole, the community understands that we're doing this because we have an opportunity, right? I mean, there's kind of a once in a lifetime opportunity.
Certainly.
And we have a limited amount of time in order to accomplish this, and so we're like taking advantage of an opportunity, but, you know, there are these negative side effects.
And another good way to look at this is, we had projects and high-cost projects proposed even before these grant dollars were available. So I mean, as far from the city of Mitchell's standpoint, it's great timing because we need to do these improvements and then we can get a thirty percent grant on top of it.
And Joe, I think this is correct, that these two grant numbers are just state grants, right?
Correct.
That's also not including that we're using our ARPA money as...
No, no, that is, yep, that's included, yep.
So what would happen if we never had any state grants? How high would we be?
That's that. No, it's, I believe it's twenty dollars a month more. No, it's, I believe it's $20 a month more, because on that last sheet, Stephanie.
The last one?
That one you just had up.
Oh, okay.
That one.
Oh, yeah, right there, that's what the orange-
All the way to the right. I think we're missing a column there or two. Yeah, 126 versus 107.
Okay.
Per month.
Per user, too.
Correct.
Okay, so if we approve this, walk us through what happens? They meet in June and determine some dollar amount that they-
So we've-
Tell us back, and then we look at the rates that-
So we've been told that on this project, we'll receive a $2.1 million grant.
Well, we've been told that already.
Yep, and that's incorporated-
Yep.
In our rate analysis. So after that, we would look at increasing our rate for this project, because we need to do that in order to close the loan-
Okay.
So we can start receiving funds to be reimbursed, probably in June or July, so we can get that loan closed as soon as possible. The ground storage tank will be bid in July, and we're probably going to be looking at the same situation where we had originally, I believe, $5 million budgeted. The project, you know, grew in scope. We're looking at 11 million, also with the increase in prices and those types of things. And we'll be looking at basically doing the same thing with another rate increase for our water rates, more than likely in August or September.
I, we could also consider, once you get your wastewater treatment improvements, rate increase done, because we've committed to that project, moving forward with, like you did last time, where you did a graduated rate structure, so that everybody knew, on this date, we went to this, and on this date, we go to this. And Joe put the dates here of when those increases would kind of need to start, so you can look at how those rate increases would be structured through 2026. It looked like, when we compared the other cities' rate structures and their ordinances, yanked, and also, I think they had a four-year on their surcharge graduated increase as well. That's how they slowly got up to that maximum, that they needed to be where they started moving forward, so.
In our, in our research, we found that Huron was implementing a 7.5% increase even before the inflation and the ARPA funds became available. And so I found that interesting. Yep.
I guess the main thing, we just wanted to be sure, because it is newer information than what was reviewed at the last meeting. And I know a lot of the public saw that, so I just want to make sure that we're clear that when you're comparing apples to apples, 22 rates to other people's 22 rates, you know, we're not as high as it looked before, especially when you're only looking at, these are other first-class municipalities. And even at our highest amount with the grant dollars being utilized, we're still not even in the top three compared to their current rates. So they're also going up because they're using their ARPA funds.
And these are the municipalities we heard back from. We did not hear back from everyone, so.
Will you bring that one back up again? And I think, yeah, Joe explained it very well, but I just want to make for sure that people understand the fact of, since '93, you can go through there and see that not every year we increased. In fact, one year, 1999, we decreased 6%, but there's, I believe it was either nine or 10 years, we did not make an increase at all. So obviously, people have been enjoying and, obviously, the cheaper water and sewer over the years. But to get to where we were in '93, to where we need to be to fund the projects going forward up to 2026, theoretically, if we would have made a 5.4% increase every year, we would have been in the same situation, the same amount. So is, you know, 5% is not a small number, but it's not huge either. So if we would have increased it 5.4, people would have been exactly where they are today. So they got by with very reasonable amounts in the past. And given the fact that we are leveraging our dollars with federal and state grants coming in, it's just an opportunity we cannot pass up because of the fact that our facilities are dated, and it is going to do nothing but get more expensive. We do know that. And the other items that we're improving with the ground storage tank and improving, then we would get rid of the water tower that's on the north side. I mean, so it's a great plan that Joe and his crew and everybody else put together. We don't want to increase rates any more than anybody else, but it's just something that, as a city, I think we're going to get more benefit as a result of doing it versus just waiting and seeing in the future, how in the world can we even afford half these projects, let alone all of them? So I'm going to make a motion to approve, given the fact, you know, nobody wants, nobody wants to see the rate increases, but it's nice to see our, our audience dwindled. I thought maybe this was going to be the, we were going to have 20-some people here to relay their sentiments, but in reality, I think in the end, as Susan pointed out, is if you explain it and if you walk through it, it really is a good opportunity for the city.
And again, tonight is approving the resolution, and then we would bring that rate increase back to you in June.
Right, I made a motion there.
Yep, I got it. Second.
Second by the motion of Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address that?
Quite an audience right now.
All who bear the most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carried. Action to approve Resolution R-202229, transfer of Lot 1, Block 1, Fullerton Property, 2nd Edition. Mr. Council.
All right, well, my part should be really quick. As the mayor said, this would be for the lot at 15th and Minnesota that we listed for sale. We did receive an offer after some negotiation. That offer currently sits at $30,000, and the mayor asked that that be placed in front of the council to consider action.
I'll move to approve.
We want to postpone?
I move that we postpone.
Well, and I think it's probably worth-
I'll second.
You made your motion a second, okay, to postpone. I think it's worth discussing the fact that we did list it for 57. We've got a $30,000 offer. At this point in time, we're going to have the mayor go back and negotiate a counter to see what happens, and hopefully get a little closer to the 57, but we'll see. And if this person walks, then we've got it listed, and then we've always got the option of sending it over to Jerry and having them and their, and their committee figure out what they want to do with the lot. So right now, it's owned by the city, but to me, that seems like a very viable option, that if nobody does, end up getting closer to our number, then we're still going to continue to work forward with the new Mahi and be able to get a single-family resident in that spot at some point in time. So we've given, we want to give the mayor the authority to continue to negotiate, and I guess we'll see what happens.
Further discussion? Anybody in the audience wish to address this? All who bear the most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carried.